Board member and superintendent comments. Do I have a volunteer, Ms. Scruggs Duncan, looks like she's still riding?
Yes.
So, Mr. Umstead, you've all turned over first.
I'm getting started. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I'd like to thank the athletes that do double duties with academics and sports. They represented the school system in the spring quite well. Appreciate that. With all of you know, we're going to move from the conference we're in to a different conference. Things might be a little more difficult, but I think we can beat the challenge because we have good kids. Also, I'd like to compliment on something that I did. I attended a committee, and I didn't see it on the agenda, so I'm just going to talk about it. I attended the most heartwarming, enjoyable committee meeting I've ever attended in the 40 years I've been at Allegheny. I saw police officers from Covington, Allegheny, state troopers, administration from every building, total involvement in the safety of my kids. I was really overwhelmed and impressed. They have it together, and Chris presented it tonight. It was wonderful, absolutely wonderful. Nobody can badmouth us because we don't protect our kids at all, at all. I hope the year continues to go well. I have another committee meeting with you guys sometime in September. I'm looking forward to it. Come to us and talk to us about positive things. Doesn't always have to be negative. I deal with a ton of negative things. Mr. Eric doesn't like to hear this, but I kept track this morning. From 6:30 this morning until I came tonight, I had 41 phone calls. 29 of them were positive. Use your math and figure out how many were negative. People want things that they got to help me do. And I don't know what the attendance is in our buildings. I hope kids are coming. I beg parents to send their kids to school. Mr. Goings is worried about the SOL scores, so am I. If you can't come to, if you do not come to school, you cannot be taught. So, the question rises, you can't tell us what you don't know if you don't know, you don't know it. Come to school and get smarter. Shut the critics up that are attacking us on our SOL scores. I don't think there's a person on this board that doesn't know what they are. And frankly, I'm tired of hearing about them. And another thing I'm going to offer, I'm going to visit every building in this county, just enjoy the company of the faculty, the teachers, and the kids in a building. Because that's what it's all about. This should be the most enjoyable time of their lives in schools. And as a representative of Doug, that I taught for 54 years. I miss being with kids. Not overwhelmed with adults anymore, but I miss being with kids. Thank you for coming, and I hope that you guys do well and come to these meetings because we need young, fresh ideas. Thank you, Mr. Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Umstead. Ms. Scruggs Duncan.
Um, okay. I was really impressed by our parade of superlative athletes. We have been able to become stronger, stronger athletically through coming together as two, into one school system. I want to thank the young people who are here that have worked through the policy part of letting the students have a voice in what we do here. I'm very impressed with you, and I look forward to being able to have that element here with us. The fact that disciplinary referrals are down 14% is amazing to me, and I'm not sure we're supposed to give Chris Fisher all of that credit, but I know he gets a lot of that because, and the, 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 the school resource officers left, but I think I said to them last time they were here, we will probably never know the danger that they, that they intercept, but the problems that we don't have because they're there in the school, so they're very valuable. Let's see. Debbie and Pam, I, I think this is a wonderful program that helps fill gaps for people in our community, and don't you guys give up, keep going with that. Dr. Goings, we've, we've chatted in different, is he still here? Yeah, in different scenarios about test scores. And, and test scores are very important academically. It's always been our goal to improve the scores because the state has set them as a marker of academic achievement. But I was that parent when they first started establishing standards of learning that had the bumper sticker that said, "My child was more than a test score." And we do strive in this school system to create a well-rounded student who achieves and will be able to achieve and have success in life and contribute to mankind. And I think we see that, that we are creating people that do that, who may or may not test well. The tests themselves have their own life as to what is required and what is going to be required in the very near future. So, I, I think I just want to say, just continue to remember that, that while testing is important, that does not necessarily measure the total success of any student that we produce here. Other than that, I want to thank the people who came out, and we'll see you next month.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Scruggs Duncan. We'll kind of go back and forth here, Mr. Woodson.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I want to reiterate again, the focus on, on character development and that goes, that goes for our board is always through the student body, our, our teachers, our administrators. Again, I think, I think we need to go to a place where extracurricular activity is considered an earned privilege in our right. And part of that criteria needs to be how you treat others, how you act when you're playing sports, how you act when you're traveling or representing our school system. We have, we have a bit of a black eye out there and for right or wrong reasons, but I think we can do a lot to correct that, and it begins with us. But, you know, I still want each board member to try to bring forth some ideas around how we improve that, working with the administrators and working with the schools, even if it takes our direct involvement. I'm willing to do whatever, but I think it is a place we need to focus on. You know, none of us can, can overshadow one bad episode by one individual. We are all able with that result. So, how do we prevent that from happening to begin with? And I think that's where we need some focus. Along those lines, I think, I'll hand, I'll hand these copies down, but Bonnington County recently adopted a random drug testing policy for students that participate in any extracurricular activity, not just sports, but, but JRTC competitions, you know, FCLA, any of those things. So, I'd like for us to consider, consider a policy similar to this. I'm not too proud to steal when I see a good idea, so I would like to share it with the board. I think there's an extra copy to share with the administrators if they haven't seen it. So, that's something we, I'd like to see us get on the agenda at one of our community Capital projects, I know, I'm jumping around, so bear with me. Capital projects, I know we, we had talked about having a separate meeting to prioritize that capital projects list. Well, I really think that needs to happen soon. I think we're in the midst of making some big key decisions regarding finance, financial projects, and I think we really need, as a board, to put some focus on what we believe the priorities are for the community, and I think I'd like to see us doing that soon rather than later. Also, the fund policy, I know we, we modified that this year. We're a couple of weeks into school. Hopefully, next month, we can get an update on how that's going at the individual schools, specifically the middle school and the high school. I think how that enforcement of that policy is, is going, we see it as a burdensome issue for our administrators and teachers, and how are our student body, how are they adhering to the new policy? I'd be curious to hear that, and that's something hopefully our student representatives can help with once we get them up and going. You know, I'd like to thank our safety resource officers. Again, Mr. Eric, you, you made the comment earlier that, that they, they don't really have an issue of lack of support here. Thank goodness. Right, I mean, what a, what a tough task. We all entrust these people with our, our most precious commodity are our kids, and we are blessed to have the group we have, so can't thank them enough. For the athletes, congratulations, well done, great spring. Let's go into fall and, and win all the championships and win the sportsmanship award. You know, they, they give a regional and district sportsmanship award. How about let's make it as long as we win both of those as well. Dr. Goings, appreciate you being here. I think it'd be good if we had more representation at our meetings from, from board supervisors as well as city council. I think you, you're right, our, we're in the bottom quartile of our SOL testing in the state. I don't believe we're at the bottom of anything. I believe we're a blue collar, we're hardworking, and our kids are the same way. I think if we give them a challenge, and we give them the opportunity, we give them the tools, and we light a fire, I think they, they can do as well as we do. They can work hard, and they can get it done. So, I appreciate you having that concern because I have it too. Don't, don't take that to mean I have all the answers, because I certainly don't as an individual, but by God, try to listen to any idea and be willing to support things. But we can't stay where we are. We just can't. I'm not a big fan of SOLs, don't get me wrong. I agree with Pam, with a lot of what she says as far as they are not the, the be all end all, but it is a criteria that the state uses, and I don't want to be last, and I don't need to be close to last. So, let's figure this out. You know, let's come up with a comprehensive plan, how we change it, how we fix it, how we move forward, and how we get excitement by the student body to change course. Last, I promise, I would, I would like for us to, to get ready, to, to come to maybe our next meeting. There's still a lot of questions in my mind around the, specifically the ownership of the facilities. I think the consolidation agreement, Section 6, Item 3, it says, "Plan for transfer of property to the consolidated school board." This is on page 21 of that agreement. It says, "Expected that the details will become clear with the, with time should consolidation be approved." That's on page 22. Well, it was approved, right, we're three years in, we're consolidating, in case anybody's wondering. We're, we're all one big school board, one big school system. I think, I think we need to clearly understand the ownership of those buildings. Both lease agreements that we're working under were written by Mark Popovich at the time, I think, was the city attorney. Maybe still is, I don't know. But I want to understand that ownership was the transfer back to the school board because under state law, we, we obviously have the power to move facilities. So, I want to understand that. I just learned when we were going through the concerns with middle school, that we were leasing all the buildings, and I think, I thought that transfer from the merger happened. But anyway, so I'd like to see us bring it on me and, and understand that crystal clear. Let's get to it.
Thank you, Ms. Woodson. Ms. Morgan?
Good evening, everyone. I have a lot tonight that not only crosses school board territory, but personal territory. So, first of all, I'd like to recognize little Emma Lynn. The neighbor she helped is my Mimi, and in my family, and a longstanding member of my family. So, that hits very close to home, and we're very grateful for what she did and very appreciative of her courageous effort in, in getting our Mimi help. So, big shout out to her for that. For the AHA political science and law, you're talking my language. I do regulatory compliance and Virginia Code every day of my career, so that I'm so excited to see that get off the ground. And I'll just go and tag on to that, to Ms. Brufman and Mr. Walton, since you're both here. Thank you for your intelligent, well-thought-out, and very polished presentation. You give me great hope for our future in this community. And, yeah, great hope. So, that, that in itself, and I'll, I'll touch on it a minute, we do have to, we do have to recognize our testing scores, but regardless of what our testing scores say, you are what represents Allegheny Highlands, and I appreciate you for that. So, with that said, congratulations to the spring champs. It's a lot of folks who came through here with a lot of hard work and dedication, for the coaches, for the students, for the parents. It is a commitment to have an athlete all the way around, and it, it takes a village. It truly takes a village, and I'm so proud of our community and the champions that we have. SROs, this is another place that hits home for me. First, as a parent, I had kids in the school system. Now, I have grown kids as teachers in the school system, so SROs are very near and dear to my heart, and I can't thank them enough what they do to keep our kiddos and our teachers and our staff safe. And I, one day, will have at least one granddaughter coming through the school system, and I'm so happy that they'll be there for her as well because I like her more than I like my kids, much more. The snack pack program, I, you know, I don't know how many of you all know this, but my mother's a food banker. I'm the daughter of the CEO of Feeding America. It's near and dear to my heart. I was raised every summer working in a food bank and feeding the hungry, and there is nothing more important to me than ending childhood hunger. And if you don't know it, we are a food desert. They're still in Virginia. They still exist, and there are people with graduate degrees, doctorate degrees. You would not believe the folks that are lining up to get assistance right now. So, this is such a needed program, so thank you for doing that and making sure our kids have food for the weekends. And I have heard firsthand the stories of the kids that go home and share with their siblings. I, you know, that aren't in school yet, don't know if there's a place for it on the form or if we can do that, I don't know, but I know that they portion it out for their siblings. So, it is a very much needed program. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. Finally, you know, so thank you all for coming. Dr. Goings, you're right, SOL results are important. The scores are not definitely where we want them to be, but nobody's talking about where they've come from. I remember, I've been on the board several years, and we've made tremendous growth. I'm going to say the word that nobody wants to talk about, but we're dealing with pandemic babies. We're dealing with kids who lost, who went backwards in their social skills and their learning skills, and I already know those plans of corrections are in action, and those staff are working so hard. I guarantee you that the staff in those schools are just as nervous about those SOL scores. I have a daughter who teaches an SOL grade, and she is physically ill when SOLs comes around. They work hard from day one to the end of the year. Through the summer, they're attending conferences. So, I know we're not where we need to be. We do need to work on it. We do need to talk about it, but the good news is we aren't where we started. We're making that growth. We're moving forward, and I think we're definitely headed in the right direction. So, that's, that's my comments on tonight, and just thank you all for being here, and I can't believe we're in another school year already. It's unbelievable, unbelievable. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. France?
Yes, sir. I too want to thank your wife for coming in tonight. And kudos to Emma. Good heavens. It makes you so proud to sit up here when you have a young lady like that that does what she did. And then you've got all these youngins, youngins, that's what I use, who are in the FCC LA, who are JRTC and AHA programs. I don't know if y'all thought about this much, but when, when we were in the consolidation, that was the 90% reason that we wanted the school at high school to be down here or Allegheny, okay? Because we need participation. We need kids to learn trades. Craft, you've done a good job. Let's, let's work on them and try to have more purpose. The adult education, that's a cool thing. I mean, if we could teach adults how to be punctual, electricians, carpenters, you know, I'm just so proud of everybody. You guys have done a good job. The parents have done a good job, and I know the SLOs personally, I am going to go this year. I don't like them. I don't think that's a true measure of, of a student's ability or their progress. And I just thank God that I didn't have one when I went to school. I'd still be down there. You know, we, we have made so much progress, and we've had a lot of bumps in the road. We had a pandemic, we had a consolidation. I mean, you know, and then, let's not forget the Confort Middle School fiasco. They, you know, the kids couldn't go to school. So, there's been a lot of things that they've been working to get out of. But the staff is trained hard. They're working hard. There's not a staff member here that I don't think is just above and beyond. All of them. And our SRO officers, I think Matt, when he was talking about the definition of all the things that you are to people, one of the things I think he did bring up was friend. Do you know how many of those SRO officers are friends with these kids? That 10 years ago, the kid would have seen a, a brown uniform or a blue uniform, they'd run. That's not the way it is now because they can trust these, these men and ladies. Ms. Brufman, Ms. Walton? See, you're not going to get held back. You did fine. I was teasing. I said, "If you take too long, you're going to be a senior twice." But you did good. It was a, a good thing, and we, you know, we need these students to be participating on our board. You know, we need your input. Ms. Jones, Pam? I remember when Ms. Whitmore had that program, that snack pack, because it wasn't a time ago, she wouldn't come by the office and want a donation. And it's, we're still one-on-one making. But you know, it's a good thing to, to support these kids, okay? To feed them. I mean, I know we offer a lot of free lunches, but there are days that there's no school, hence no lunch, okay? So, let's, let's dig down, help. When they come by and say, you know, "I need a few bucks," or "I need a donation," or "I need a help," okay? Reach in your pocket, help them out, okay? Oh, let's see, what else have I missed? Nothing. So, to tell you all, thank you all so much. And staff, again, thank you all. You guys are busting your tail here. I mean, all of you, if it isn't administrators, it's the teachers, it's these people working in yards. I'm just like to mow grass in the night if you're eating house sand. The bus drivers, the garage people, I'll do a good job, and, and I want you to know we appreciate you, okay? We appreciate the light. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. France. And Ms. Walton?
I'll try to keep this short this evening. There's so much to say, but I'll reiterate what all the other board members have said, and I just want to thank everybody here for coming this evening. Ms. Brufman, Mr. Walton, thank you so much for all of your hard work. Look forward to serving with y'all. And Elijah, I heard your name back there too, so thank you, sir. But you keep applying yourselves, y'all do great, and it brings joy to my heart to see people stepping up to the plate, especially young adults that are moving forward, and that, that's what we need in their community. I just want to thank all of our staff, everyone from the janitors, bus drivers, aides, paraprofessionals, teachers, administrators, custodians. I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody, but it takes the whole village to make it work, and I'm very proud of our, I'm very proud of our village. And I'll end with, I just want to share a quote that Ms. Holtermann and Ms. Neath Johnson have both told me several times is, "We're striving for excellence. We, we don't want to be mediocre." And I think that's a good vision for our system, and we always want to strive to do the best, just as Mr. Ross was saying earlier, we were talking about things that, you know, trying to get a child anything on their schedule for whatever they want. That, I mean, that's a challenge with as many kids in our school, but they make it happen because we have faith and we believe in our children, and they put in the hard work like these kids sitting here in front of us today, and they'll be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Superintendent Walton?
Yeah, well, it's hard to follow all these comments this evening. There's, there's a lot that's happened in this meeting, and I hope I can capture it all. This is one of those meetings that warms our hearts because there's a lot to be proud of in a lot of the things we've celebrated tonight, and we're, we're excited about that. We're excited to feel the community's support. You know, it's great to hear people offering to help our kids, like through things like the backpack program. We have at least four students still remaining in the room, and I, and I hope I counted them correctly. We, we have at least two other local officials still remaining in the room. This is exciting, and that's good support for our students, it's good support for our staff. And that's, that's one of the things that I think from Melinda and I's voice, we'd always continue to request, that, that support means a lot, and our students feel it, and we really appreciate all those words of, of belief and helping our students through anything that's hard that might be in front of them, and we know we've got a community that does that. And when we can honor the diversity of achievements that we had here tonight, really, there's no student in our school division that wasn't recognized tonight because that fall in discipline referrals is every single person. That's every single student, that's every single family, that's every single staff member. That, that's great. That, that's a, that's a difference we cannot attribute to any kind of fluke. That's a statistically significant difference. We also have some other things that you can see in your notes there that really help us, again, emphasize that strategic planning goal of future-ready for the community. We heard a lot about that tonight, and that's one of our three strategic kind of north stars, if you will. And we heard that, whether we're talking about FCC LA or we were talking about a, a third grader involved in a really significant act and really, really helping out one of her elders. We, in, in that material, I encourage anyone interested, and this is, this is all available on our website, there's additional details that we didn't even hit tonight, you know? Jackson River Governor's School enrollment is up, for example. I mean, there's several, several things that are really important in those details that have been, things that our community has brought to us, and we're just so proud of not only our team as staff, we're proud of our staff for working on that, but we're also very proud of our students and our families, and you all for devoting leadership and resources to that because that doesn't, that doesn't come out of the air. Those staff positions, all those kinds of things, they're ultimately dollars that the board allocates, and we, we really appreciate the, the hard work that's represented there. We want to continue to emphasize, I heard several of you indicating tonight, how much we're all trying to encourage our kids to come to school. That's really important to help our kiddos engage. As Mr. Ross said, we try to make it happen for them. If, if they have an interest, no matter what their age is, we're going to try to make school interesting for them and memorable for them. So, anything that anyone in the community can do to help us with that is very appreciated. And while it's absolutely true that our data is not finalized, and we were expecting some, some, some parts of preliminary data to be finalized today, I don't believe that's been done yet. That, that's coming to us, that's not something we can do internally. We'll get all of that hopefully by the end of September, but we know of some strong signals in that data. So, there's some pieces that we're excited about, but we're trying very hard not to get out in front of ourselves because we want to make sure that we give everybody the right information, and that information is changing because of changes in the state's accreditation and accountability system. So, just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. Questions about that are really complex, but we're happy to try to help with them, and we definitely heard everybody this evening, you know, hoping for the very best for our kiddos, no matter what the measure is, right? The, the measure might be an SOL test, the measure might be discipline referrals, the measure might be attendance, the measure might be, you know, if the student came to school and, and enjoyed something today. All of those measures are worthwhile, and they're all part of the overall package. I did write a ton of notes tonight, and so I want to make sure I continue with the rest of you all to recognize our SROs, our athletes, our students involved with AHA. That is really exciting for both of our AHA programs have now been recognized statewide, and they are both first of the kind in the state. So, we're very excited about that. And I think that might be all I wrote down to say tonight, but there was a lot, and really appreciate all the involvement tonight and want to just kind of underline that. Thank you for the gift of time to share all of that.
Thank you. All right. Ms. France, and I've got a lot of notes here. Would you like me to go over all of them?
Sure, sure.
Well, for brevity-
Well, for brevity, you don't have the time, Ms. Sir, I'll be brief. But again, I've had a lot of good things here tonight, not the least of which is our SROs. I do appreciate Ms. Brufman, Mr. Walton, and I'm glad Mr. Halterman was also mentioned. Proud of the work that you all have done and excited to see that coming into the future. Those that came to us to speak, Ms. Jones, Ms. Myers, thank you very much for being here. Mr. Goings, thank you for being here as well. I always appreciate the conversation. Contrary to what some people might say, I do appreciate the conversation. So certainly appreciate your viewpoint on that as well. As far as standardized testing goes, I mean, you can count me as one of those ones. I don't believe it's the end-all or be-all, but it's certainly a component of how we measure ourselves. So we do need to do the best we can. And we, particularly those aspects of that, that we know are within our scope of control. Because so much of the things that we try to do in relation to student achievement is not inside of our control totally. We have to partner with families and the students themselves to do the best that we can. But we'll keep working to that end, but we appreciate your interest there. Good to see Mr. Dodd here this evening, sir. Thank you very much for being here. As was said before, we always appreciate seeing our friends in local government. So come back anytime and invite the rest of your board. I won't echo everything else, but I do want to take just a couple of minutes or minute or so. Last Wednesday, I was hopping around, kind of trying to not get in the way of anybody during the first day of school. But I saw a lot of neat things and I did take a few notes and I won't go over all of them, Ms. Francis. But again, I was doing my best to just be as helpful as I could. But from, I mean, the good news is I was not needed because the staff had everything covered. But what I did see was our bus drivers making that first day back-to-school bus chaos look kind of smooth and routine. And I'm sure it wasn't, but from my observation, it very much looked that way. So I appreciate, appreciate that. I saw a lot of custodians busy making a lot of last-minute adjustments, getting ready for the kids coming back. So we need to thank those folks for whatever it is they were doing. Some of the things they were doing, I wouldn't have even noticed until I saw them adjusting it. I'm like, yep, that makes sense why they're doing that. Of course, I saw lots of teachers smiling, hugging kids and just happy to have their kids back. And that was, you know, welcoming those returning back, but then also making sure we welcomed the newcomers to our school. I saw principals moving with purpose, heads on a swivel, trying to make sure everything was running smoothly. And I think they did a pretty good job with that. And overall, for everyone, what I saw was a lot of patience, excitement, but professionalism, which that's what I think impressed me the most. And that's not something, you know, the list that I just ticked through there, it's not going to make a ton of headlines, but it's the heartbeat of what we did. So thank you all very much. Again, I know there was more to it than what I just went over, but you made it look about as easy as you could have. So thank you all very much. And with that, I will prepare to close, if that's okay, Ms. Francis.